All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education. This is July 26. And Madam Secretary, you take attendance, please.
Yes, all board members are present except for Mr. Ford.
Very good. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, we are in the middle of a beautiful summer, and I hope everybody is enjoying the slower, longer, pretty days that we are having. And I hope you can have time to enjoy your families and do some special things. While families have a little bit more time to be together, this is a busy time for the school district administration. A lot of our folks are doing a lot of preparation, work being done across the buildings to try to do some summer improvements so that when our students get back in the fall, we are ready and got some great things to be able to share with them. A couple of exciting new things that just wanted to mention to everybody. This week, our Bloomfield Hills High School Bionic Blackhawks, we have a team competing in China at the Guangzhou International Robotics Competition. We have, they're one of nine teams from the U.S. that are in China to be part of this competition. So, go Bionic Blackhawks. This is a great, big, exciting thing for them to have an opportunity to be part of and representing us. So, that's an exciting piece. Also learned this summer that our Bloomfield Hills High School Model UN Team has just been ranked as one of only two teams in Michigan and in the top 150 teams of the best high school Model UN Teams in North America. And I think those are a couple of pretty exciting things to be able to recognize. We've got some fabulous mentors that help our, and guide our students to do some special achievements, and we are very, very proud of them. And the summer is speeding by. Welcome Back Day for our staff is already August 27. And I hope board members will, if they can, be part of the Welcome Back for our Staff that morning. I'll let Rob talk a little bit about what's planned for that day, but we hope that board members will be able to be part of that. Also want to ask board members to recognize August 14. Our superintendent will be at the Birmingham-Bloomfield Chamber of Commerce meeting for sort of the start off the year with the community leaders. And so you might mark your calendar if you have a chance to be part of that, that meeting. And then remember that we all have another repeat on the retreat on our books for August 15. And we are moving to the farm for that meeting. So, just wanted to call those couple of things onto your, onto your agenda. And with that, I will turn that over to Rob.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is what I sort of refer to the time of the year as the new model change over time. You know, you're closing out the old year, you're bringing in the new year. So, we've spent a lot of time already sorting through our community survey data. That community survey that had a tremendous response from our community, internal and external stakeholders. We thank you very much for taking the time to do that, and that data is really, I have 600 pages of that data that I'm sorting through right now, not just myself, but our team. And I'd like to thank our team for taking the time to really look at that so that they can kind of glean the themes. We're still going through it, but it does inform our work going forward. And we use that to set our project plans and our goals and all of that. So, that's kind of where we're fine tuning those. And also fine tuning, tuning up our buildings, I guess you could say. They get a thorough cleaning in the summertime. And then we also are fine tuning and putting in place, you know, technology, kind of doing some of the rebuilds and repairing the things that need to be repaired while the system's not being used heavily. And those are important things to get ready for the school year. But we are getting excited. Our opening day, as Cynthia mentioned, is going to be, featuring a speaker by the name of Chris Edmund. He's a tenured professor in the Department of Math, Science, and Technology at Teachers' College, Columbia University, dynamic speaker with a great message. And I hope all board members can come. Certainly, our entire staff will be delighted to have Chris come and talk with us. And we're looking forward to that very, very much. Lastly, I want to just, just say something that I'm very proud about with regard to our board president Cynthia Von Ooyen. She is being recognized by the Women Officials Network, which is a very prestigious local organization with the Wonder Woman, little play on words, W-O-N, Women Officials Network, Wonder Woman. She's being honored along with three others, very prestigious people, as a Wonder Woman for this year. Along with this award, she's awarded alongside of her the Honorable Jessica Cooper, the Oakland County Prosecutor, Rochelle Riley, the author and columnist, the Honorable Deidra Waterman, Mayor of Pontiac, and of course, the Honorable Cynthia Von Ooyen, Bloomfield Hills School Board President. This will be taking place at the San Marino Club on Thursday, September 27 at 5:30. We are just really excited for this honor. It's so well deserved. Cynthia, you've been so involved in Women Officials Network over the years, and you've been so involved with everything that's going on with the political scene here locally and regionally, and just investing in our community and making sure we have good leaders in places, and always trying to recruit, you know, people to take those leadership roles because it really does take a lot of people in a community working together to make it a great community. And so, I'm so glad you're being recognized for this. No one's more deserving.
Thank you.
So, we'll give you a little advance applause for that.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Great. Well, then, I will ask for our consent agenda motion. Jackie, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes, closed session, June 21, 2018. Request to approve minutes, study session of June 21, 2018. Request to approve minutes, regular meeting of June 21, 2018. Request to approve minutes, study session of July 12, 2018. Request to approve membership in the 2018-19 Michigan High School Athletic Association. Request to approve membership of the 2018-19 in the Michigan Association of School Boards. Request to approve membership 2018-19 to National School Boards Association. Request to approve membership in the 2018-19 Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies. Request to approve 2018 depositories and Investment Institutions, the following institutions: Bank of America, Comerica Bank, Chase Bank, Fifth Third Bank, Chemical Bank, Flagstar, CIBC, Huntington Bank, Citizens Bank, PNC Bank. Government pooled funds, Chemical Bank Money Market, CIBC Money Market Account, Comerica Bank Business Money Market Account. Flagstar Money Market, JP Morgan Funds, MBIA Asset Management, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund. Request to approve dispersment reports. Request to approve shared time agreement with St. Hugo of the Hills Schools for the 2018-19 school year. Request to approve HR actions.
Do I have support?
Support.
Discussion? I'd just like to call out and recognize that in this, we'll be accepting the retirement of Meg Harkinen, who's been a vital part of our board office staff for 27 years. She's served in a multitude of different roles over there, from rec departments, ski patrols, anything and everything else that was ever needed. And so, she will be sorely missed. She's done wonderful things for us, and I know she had a senior graduate this year. So, congratulations to Meg.
I don't know if I have to recuse myself from item J because my employer is named in there.
I was wondering if I could.
You want to abstain on that item?
Yes.
Any other comments on the motion?
Thinking about that, my wife works for Chemical Bank, so I'm wondering whether I should withdraw my second and probably recuse myself also.
If there's only four of us elected and serving, is that a problem?
I believe you need L because you're short one. Four of seven.
One, two, three, four. No, but it's elected, then it's a majority of those elected and serving.
Yeah, four. We'll vote. We've got, we've got a quorum. We have a quorum. It'll be four to, four to nothing.
If nobody goes against.
All in favor?
Okay.
I. All, nays? Abstaining?
Abstain.
Two, Mr. Politier and Mr. Barron are abstaining. Motion carries.
Some days, even the simple things aren't easy, right?
Okay. Didn't see that one coming. I hadn't seen that one coming. Okay.
Glad you did. It was commendable.
Okay, moving on.
Very ethical board members.
Moving on to general discussion, only item I have for general discussion is just to mention that the Policy Committee, Mr. Barron and Mr. Cohen, I met with Kelly Ball and our superintendent, and Kevin Sutton from Musk Anderson, and spent another of our, I think now, five, three-hour sessions going through our board policies. And we are, I think we've, will have gone through all of them once, so now we're going back to look at some particular ones that we needed to take another look at. But I think we could be looking at, starting to bring some to the board to have further discussion, probably September, October, we will be ready to bring, start bringing things to the board. But we are continuing to make, do the hard work slogging through the detail. So, I thank you all for your time and effort on that because that's been a big project. Anything else for general discussion from anyone else? All right, at this point, I do have a few cards for our public comment. And I'd like to invite up Len Dillon to talk about the high school.
Good evening. I'm Len Dillon at 4057 near Brook Road. This is my daughter Grace. She's a newly printed alumni from the high school, 2018. She'll be attending the University of Michigan, studying engineering in the fall. And I have a pair of, I call them the dynamic duo, a pair of seventh grade rising, rising seventh graders, boys in the Bloomfield Hills Middle School. And I've got some serious concern in where they go to high school. And I have to find out, I'm doing the research now on where I send them. And it was brought to my attention that there was one family that was, had a couple of kids go through the high school, and they're really high achieving kids, and they're classmates with my son, my sons, and they're going to move in a different direction at high school. And the reason was being, was primarily in mathematics was the issue. But I need to do some due diligence here, and I don't know, I figured I'd start here, and that is test scores. I have to look at what, we just went through the college entrance equation with Grace and all the different colleges, know what the test scores are trending, and where they've been historically, what the GPA is for the students. Let's see. And Grace had pointed out to us that there's some, some big concerns in the mathematic department, and she'd be more than happy to share them with you. But Bloomfield Hills High School isn't the school that she started at. And the direction or the administration didn't give a lot of guidance to what, to where Grace was going to go and how she was going to get there. And I kind of likened it to a ship without someone at the helm. And it's alarming to me, and especially for boys. When you have, and I have two of them at the same time, one girl, high achieving academically, with a wife that can, can help navigate the waters, that's great. Two boys, it's a different scenario. Also, they get judged a little more critically academically, I think, maybe. And I know they looked a little more critically on college application, so it's really imperative. I don't get a do-over on where I send them. So, I got to make sure the decision's going to be the right decision. And when I heard that the family was moving in a different direction, it caused serious alarm. And that's what, the alarm that took us out of parochial school to begin with and brought Grace over to Bloomfield Middle School. Did you want to talk about the math?
Yeah, I can go into some more detail about some of my concerns as a graduate of the high school. First off, I did have a good experience at the high school, and I feel like there's a lot of pros to my experience at the high school, and I definitely would not have been able to get to where I'm going, studying engineering at Michigan, without those experiences. But looking now at some of the changes the district has made in my brother's experience there, I don't really see the same opportunity that I was given. Originally, I transferred from St. Hugo Middle School, in middle school, to go to Bloomfield Hills Middle School due to weaknesses in parochial school, math and science, and just the general lack of opportunities that they had there, which Bloomfield Hills Schools has a large amount of opportunity in math and science. And I definitely took advantage of those during my time there. However, I feel that those opportunities that were there for me when I started as a middle schooler and during my time at the high school are no longer there. Specifically, the math curriculum has the eradication of honors level classes and the removal of algebra from the middle school puts students, and I feel the district as a whole, in a general disadvantage. Specifically, when you have, when you remove algebra from the middle school levels and you move algebra into the high school as a freshman year course, then you take geometry, taking Algebra II as a junior, you don't have any of the precalculus experience you need in your junior year in order to succeed on those ACT, SAT, college exam exams. You're missing out on an important curriculum that you need to succeed on these exams. And that would definitely not only put students, but the district at a disadvantage. Secondly, without the honors curriculum in the math department, I feel that students such as myself lack that community of very driven and students with the same passions. I would not have been able to find that same community that I found at Bloomfield Hills High School of females and males alike that are interested in the STEM field, that are really driven to succeed at the next level without my honors math classes that I had in my AP math classes, which are obviously still there. But I also pose this question too. Given the current track that the math department has, if I were to be an advanced student, say, take algebra in middle school, then take geometry freshman year, Algebra II sophomore year, and then take precalculus my junior year, without an honors precalculus course and taking precalculus with everyone else, how would I be ready to take AP Calc BC as a senior without giving that rigor that I was needed along the way in those three years prior? I really feel that without those opportunities, my brothers and other students in those same position wouldn't be able to succeed in the future if they want to do something like engineering, or finance, or business. And there's a lot of success in my class with the existing curriculum that I was able to experience in those opportunities, especially amongst females interested in the STEM field. I was surrounded by peers that are now, that are going to MIT next year, that are going to Berkeley's Engineering School, that are going to Duke's Engineering School. It was that community of people I had and that rigorous math experience I experienced in Bloomfield Hills High School that helped me succeed and really pushed me to be better. And now, without that program, without those opportunities, I feel students are going to fall in the cracks, lose that passion and interest for math. And the district prides itself on the opportunities it has within the STEM field, and I feel that some of the decisions that have been made are really putting a disservice to students and the district as a whole. So, hopefully you'll consider that. Feel very passionately about the STEM field, and yeah.
Okay, so, and so along with that, in order to get Grace to that level of academic achievement, my wife and I spent probably eight to $10,000 a year in tutors in keeping her on track and getting her in place and allowing her to achieve that. And I'm going to have to do the same thing with my boys, but now the hill's even steeper because I'm not going to have the protocols or the classes available in the honors. And it's been told to me by people real close to me that Bloomfield Hills used to teach to honors, and they pride themselves on that. And they say that they teach to the middle now. And that's, that's a real tough one to swallow. So, I don't know if you feel that way, but that's what the thought is on the street. So, what I'm here to find out is what tools of measurement do I, do I, are there available to me other than test scores and, you know, the grade points, the AP classes, that I can use to do my due diligence and find out that Bloomfield Hills High School is the place to send my kids? Because I'm going to spend the money on the tutors. Do I do it at a private school? And the private schools have all of the data available. And they're more than happy to share that with me. And so, I don't know if there are other measurable items that we can use to determine the greatness of the Bloomfield Hills High School. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. So, we have your contact information. Public comment at a board meeting is not a time that we engage in dialogue.
I know that.
But we will, still, we will definitely be getting back to you with some response.
I hope so. Great. Thanks.
Thank you. We have your contact information. Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite up Truman Gregg, Jackson Gregg, and Nathan Pham. Welcome.
These are some.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. I am Truman Gregg, a resident of West Bloomfield Hills, West Bloomfield, and I attend Bloomfield Hills High School. My address is 4074 South Pine Center Drive, West Bloomfield.
I'm Jackson Gregg, resident of West Bloomfield, and I attend Bloomfield Hills High School. My address is 4074 South Pine Center Drive, West Bloomfield.
I am Nathan Pham, a resident of Bloomfield Hills, and I attend Bloomfield Hills High School. My address is 4016 Blackthorne Court. Our comments and presentation represent our individual beliefs.
We are seniors at Bloomfield Hills High School, and we'd like to tell you about our proposal to provide protection for all employees of Bloomfield Hills School District against discrimination on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation. The current Bloomfield Hills District Equal Opportunity Employer Statement reads as follows. The Bloomfield Hills Schools is an equal opportunity employer. It is the policy of the Bloomfield Hills Schools not to discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, height, weight, marital status, disability, genetic information, or any other reason prohibited by applicable laws in its program, services, activities, or employment practices. It is our belief that this statement should explicitly include, it is also not, it is also the policy of Bloomfield Hills Schools not to discriminate on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation. Multiple U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission rulings support this addition to the Bloomfield Hills School District's Equal Opportunity Employer Statement.
We have provided some pamphlets that we pass around, and to summarize and point details in these two EEOC appeals. The EEOC lists Macy v. Depp of Justice and Baldwin v. Depp of Transportation Decision wherein discrimination on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation are prohibited under previous laws. This addition will have multiple benefits. Most importantly, Bloomfield Hills High School will explicitly provide a safe, inclusive, cooperative, and friendly environment for all Bloomfield Hills School employees. This will also benefit the school's district's attractiveness to potential employees and There is a wealth of information that unveils discrimination against people based on gender identity and sexual orientation in a poll conducted by teachers union and a S U W T at its LGBTI teachers consultation conference in 2016. The union found that more than a third of the participants, 38%, said they have experienced discrimination, bullying, harassment, and victimization in the last 12 months because of their LGBTI identity. Chris Cates, General Secretary of the N A S U W T, said, "Schools which are not inclusive environments for LGBTI staffs are unlikely to be supportive environments for LGBTI pupils." Either, furthermore, Chris stated, "It is important that schools take their responsibilities on promoting equality and respect seriously to create an environment where everyone feels valued, respected, and safe." Obviously, this ideal promoting equity, inclusion, and respect to create an environment where everyone feels valued, respected, and safe is a fundamental part of school district policy.
We would also like to recognize the specific characteristics that are covered under the Equal Opportunity Employer Statement, which are race, color, religion, national origin, sets, age, height, weight, marital status, disability, and genetic information. Those are expressly mentioned in the School District's Equal Opportunity Employer Statement. Since it's clearly important to expressly state these characteristics, especially race, religion, and sets in our current time, this sends a message to the Bloomfield Hills School District will do everything that it can to create a non-discriminatory work environment for all. For that reason, this addition to the Bloomfield Hills School District Equal Opportunity Employer Statement is imperative, which the addition is adding gender identity and sexual orientation under this non-discrimination clause. So, we appreciate the opportunities the Bloomfield Hills School District provides students by supporting and encouraging student engagement in School District policy. We have worked closely with many Bloomfield Hills School District employees as we have developed this project. We met with Dr. Glass, Cynthia Von Ooyen.
Kelly Ball. Yep. And there are a couple of people here that are supporting us. We have our very good teacher, Marlo, for sure. She was our teacher, and she kind of helped us with planning this project and carrying it out. And we have some family and friends over there who came to support us in this endeavor. So, in our Global Studies class of Mrs. Rose and Ms. Fisher, we began this project, and as I mentioned, we had a meeting with Mrs. Ball. We learned about federal law discrimination based on gender identity or sexual orientation is illegal under these two rulings. There is, we only had one copy of the sheet that actually lists those rulings and has a little more information about them. But you guys pass that around. So, we, we really do appreciate the opportunities that were available for advancing this proposal and that this district provides. This is really good that students can get involved in district policy. So, thank you for your consideration on this matter.
And that is all the cards I have for public comment this evening. And as I mentioned in our, in my remarks under general discussion, our Policy Committee is looking at all these policies, including the one that was mentioned. So, with that, we will now move on into our board business. The first item we have on board business is the notification of location change for the board retreat meeting. This is required for us to take action on it, otherwise it would have been in consent agenda if we could have moved it into consent agenda. But just for the meet, for, for public notification purposes, this meeting is being moved from the Nature Center over to the farm, and we're just letting folks know that we are moving. So, with that, I don't have it, I don't think there's actually a motion here, but I think we can easily craft one if somebody will be willing to come up with that language for me, so we can take a vote.
I move that the meeting on August 15, the board retreat meeting, be moved from the Nature Center to the Charles L. Bowers Farm on Square Lake Road.
Support from Mr. Politier. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That was pretty easy. Okay, moving on. Next is the adoption of the 2018-19 School Year Board of Education Goals. So the board met on July 12th in a retreat to discuss goals for this year ahead, and we had a spirited dialogue for about two and a half hours of these items, and we cut and pasted and pushed and pulled and came with a revised status before you at this time. I appreciate a motion.
Do we need to read the goals?
Uh, you can, I think it'd be good to read the goals. Here we go. They're in the pack. Third or fourth pick.
Oh, sorry. Maybe I do have one I didn't see.
Okay. I move that we approve the Board of Education goals as follows. One, authorize and, authorize support and participate in a strategic planning process to guide the district. Two, support administration in maintaining an educational environment that promotes emotional and physical safety. Three, develop new board policies focusing on equity and student outcomes in the district. Four, board professional development will include learning about, colon, A, instructional practices embedded in the new Bloomfield Hills learner profile, B, precisioning of practices in instruction and workshop practices in literacy, C, developing shared understanding with administration to elevate the practices, structures for district improvement plans, and D, communication and operations for learner supports, including Five-O-Four Plans. Five, create board operating procedures. Six, work with the superintendent to engage in community, the community in key issues of state and/or federal public education advocacy. Seven, support continuous improvement of board operations through a board self-assessment and individual board member professional development. Did I say this preamble here?
No, go ahead.
Did I say, so, sorry, I did not put the preamble, which is part of what we are approving, because that is our discussion. The preamble is, "In addition to our board's budgeting responsibilities and the evaluation of the superintendent, our 2018-19 goals are," and then that would follow with the numbered goals that I just read.
Thank you. We have support for the motion. Support for Mr. Bank. Discussion of the motion. Any discussion? We had pretty spirited, in-depth conversation at our retreat. So each of those items, the board will be, there's a number of pieces that are, are learning for the board to be, to get better acquainted with. And some of, as a, this is the first year we've put the preamble onto our goals, because that is, rather than making it a goal, it's a standing part of the work of, of being a board member. Are there any other comments anybody wants to make about these?
I would just say that the first one that we put, and we intentionally put it as the first one, is working on the, with the administration on the strategic plan. The last time this district has done a strategic plan was in 2008. It was updated, I think, in 2013, but this is the first time really we're going to have real in-depth analysis of where we're going over the next number of years. So this is going to consume a good significant amount of time for the board and the administration and the community to, to work on this, so we can come up with a plan hopefully by possibly the end of this calendar year.
I think I would also mention that we do this every year. We do develop our board goals and approve them, but also in our retreat, before we started to craft this year's new goals, we also reviewed our performance on our past goals. And so that is a part of closing the loop, and we do that every year in our summer retreats.
Right, and this year was the first year we had used the MASP Board Self-Evaluation Tool, and we did some debrief on, on that as well.
It's one of the tools we use in order to gauge our performance.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And last item is the approval of the superintendent goals for this year. Can I have a motion, please?
Just read the motion saying, "I recommend the Board of Education approve the, draft superintendent goals for the 2018-19."
Yes, because they are two pages long.
Yeah.
And they, so these goals, once approved, will be posted on our website to be, to be available for our community to, to read and, yeah, at their leisure. Again, we've had good conversation with Rob through the year. They're pretty kind of long to read at this point. If anybody wants to read them, I've got them right here.
One thought is maybe just reading the first sentence of each one.
All right, which I, so if I've got the motion, Jack, you want to read it?
Okay, the first sentence, there are eight of them. And these are actually the goals also that we use when we also do, and these inform the annual, part of the annual superintendent evaluation. By September of 2018, the administration will launch a facilitated, community-engaged strategic planning process under the theme Bloomfield Forward. Two, by June of 2019, the board and administration will have shared, a shared understanding and elevated practices slash structures for district improvement plans and goals. Three, by June 2108.
Eighteen. We cracked her up, okay. Some days I like that, it's okay.
By June 2018, the administration will convene a regularly meeting committee of internal stakeholders.
I don't think it works.
It's working to the tape, but not to the audience.
Regular meeting committee of internal stakeholders to use community survey and other data to assess and identify a prioritized list of highest-level safety and security actions recommended throughout the district. By August 2018, the administration will identify approximately two to five highest priority needs for process improvement throughout the district. Equity, inclusion, social, emotional wellness. By June 2019, the administration will create a cohesive structure and plan that integrates and informs opportunity and achievement, school culture, student voice, instructional practices, dare, community practices, and efforts to create a more global workforce. Between September 2018 and June 2019, the administration will at regular intervals report to the Board of Education the unfolding results of education program visioning, along with any impact, supports, or further recommendations. Between September 2018 and June 2019, the superintendent will participate in entrance-based bargaining sessions leading to positive outcomes as evidenced by ratification of a mutually agreeable master agreement between the BHEA and the Board of Education. Between 2018 and 2019, the superintendent will engage state and local associations, government officials, and local Bloomfield Hills networks to advocate for improved public education through state policies specifically regarding elements embodied below, but I'm not going to read that.
All right. Do I have a second to the motion? Support for Mr. Politier. Discussion. They're lofty and excellent, and we look forward to a year ahead. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So just a couple of quick closing remarks. Couple of us will be going to a conference on restorative practices. Couple of us will be going to a MASP conference coming up shortly. I know we've got administrators going to conferences all over the place right now. All of us to help to, to help our schools be the best they can be.
And please, everybody remember to vote August 7.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion carries. Have a safe summer, everybody.